Everybody, welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Wednesday, May fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Before we start, if we could just all please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start off the meeting with our consent agenda. I will make a motion to approve regular session minutes of April twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, executive session minutes of April twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, governance subcommittee minutes of March twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, and acceptance of warrants forty-four P nineteen, forty-six P nineteen, forty-five V nineteen, and forty-seven V nineteen.
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. It looks like we don't have our student rep tonight because we did, we were supposed to meet last Thursday and we changed and we probably didn't let Chloe know the change.
I hope she didn't show up last week.
I know.
No, I think she knew.
No, she was on, she was at the concert. So I'll just talk a little bit for her, which I'm sure this is what she would be talking about. So we changed our meeting last week so we could attend the, it was the middle school and high school chorus and a cappella and, and it was amazing. When I tell you that it was, I never thought that it could top Disney, the performance, but.
I did hear it was one of the best in recent years.
It was, Caitlin did a phenomenal job that night and, and for a few reasons. The kids were so organized, like between all those different groups, because first there was middle school that went out and then they, you know, went out into the audience and sat like so well behaved and everything. And then the high school chorus came out and then the a cappella and it was just like so smooth. You know, it wasn't like in the, in years past, I just remember like the kids bumping into each other, they're, you know, like trying to get off the stage, these ones are coming on. And the music that she picked was like right on. It was just a phenomenal night. And then at the end of the night, they had the entire chorus, middle and high school chorus on the stage together.
Yeah, that was really nice.
And I've never seen that before.
No, that was really nice.
So I know you were the first one to stand up when it was all done, but they got a standing ovation and I really think a lot of it, it was for the kids, but Caitlin did an amazing job that night. So I really credit that night to her. And when I emailed her, telling her that, she's like, those kids are.
That was very nice, you sent her that private note, she really appreciated that.
She was just, but everything was taken off her. She's like, nope, it's the kids, it was the kids, the students did such a great job. But I was just so happy. And that night was the night of the Bruins game and I was kind of dreading going.
Yeah.
I hope Tia's not watching, but it didn't bother me at all. Like even my husband was like, oh my God, this is so good. It was just, it was such a really good night. And a few of the kids had solos, which were amazing. Like they went up without any hesitation and I was just so proud of them. There's just such a great feeling when you see that and you see the teacher that has that passion to bring that out in the kids. So that was really good. It was a really good night.
Right, so did they sing different music than they did in Disney?
They did, and I think there was a question around one of the songs, I think that she might have been taking it away, it was kind of seems like a tradition. So she listened to the students and brought it back. And I'm not sure which particular song that was, but the kids were all happy about that. But yes, it was, it was different from.
They, they did do one song that they did in Disney, but you're right, it wasn't the same concert or anything like that.
Yeah, but it was so good. It was great.
It was really great. And it was Tia's last concert, which was why it was very important.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm glad that we were able to change the meeting to tonight and then tomorrow night's the band concert. So tomorrow night, Thursday, our normal night wouldn't work either.
Right.
You know, because I hate to have the meetings interfere with that. So you spoke to the band and class teacher?
I did, I talked to Eric and Caitlin personally about, you know, trying to, I know it's hard because Thursday night is sort of their traditional night, but it just seems that the meetings tend to be on the second and fourth, the concerts tend to be on the second and fourth when we're meeting. So this has happened over the years, so I just thought, I'll just talk to them personally. And they said, oh, we're so sorry, but you know, if you just give us the dates, we'll totally avoid that. So they have the school committee dates, so that.
And there is a master calendar of dates, I believe.
And they do a master calendar for the year, like around now.
Right.
So it was perfect timing and, you know, I know they'll, they'll really work hard to make, because they know we like to go and enjoy and appreciate the kids.
Yeah, it was really good. And then another thing that she did is there were thirty-two or thirty-three seniors and she called them all up.
Wow.
And she gave them each an individualized card.
She wrote a private note to each kid.
Which was really nice, too. So, yeah, it was really nice.
It meant a lot to the kids, the kids were very touched by that.
Thirty-two seniors.
There were a lot.
Yeah, there were a lot of seniors, yeah. But it was, it was really good. So I'm trying to think what else Chloe would say.
Prom's coming up?
Yep, prom is coming up.
On the thirty-first.
Last day of school.
Thirty-first.
Um, the countdown's begun, the seniors are already, you know, counting the days down and I'm not sure.
That happened a while ago, I think, right?
Yeah, that happened back in November.
Bet you some of the teachers are counting down.
It's going fast.
Sports?
Yeah, sports, I know games got canceled today.
Uh, baseball's playing, varsity played today, I do not know the outcome.
Oh yeah, they were playing tonight, I think.
Yeah, Ryan has had to do a, yeah, Ryan has had to do a fair amount of rescheduling with the ones that don't play on turf.
Yeah, well, the weather hasn't been all that cooperative.
It's been cold.
Either. So we did have town elections and we just want to welcome Cheryl back to the school committee.
Congratulations Cheryl, good for you.
Much.
Congratulations.
Good job, so you'll have three more years.
Well, you worked hard on that Cheryl, you know, I think you did a very nice job.
Monday was a, it was a great day, it was, started off warmer and then once the rain set in, it was a little tricky, but I was thinking about the day and just the amount of community people that I haven't seen in years and former students who are now registered voters, adults, who, you know, came by to say hello and their parents and so it was really nice to see folks that I haven't seen in a while.
Yeah, that's good, good. Well, congratulations.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone here from the public that wants to talk about anything that's on the agenda this evening? Nope? All right, so the first item that we have up here, we have the RAP committee update, which I love the name, weather-related action plan, which I think is great. So if you guys want to come on up.
Come on up everybody, grab some chairs. So this is a sampling of, of the group, it was.
Yeah, you have a large group.
It's a large group, I put the names in for you so you could see who's on the committee. And then group of them got together and put together the PowerPoint, which is terrific.
Well, thank you all for coming out tonight and also for volunteering for this committee because this is a committee that has gotten a lot of talk going across not just our community or even the state, across the country, really, the states that experience weather that hinders the school year from ending when it's supposed to. So it's, it's good that we did form this committee and thank you all for taking the time to do it. Suzanne and Michael also are on the committee. Where is the list, in your orange notes?
I thought it was, I thought we, but it's not in the packet.
It's in the packet. I know there was like four community members.
It's an audience list, isn't it?
Fourteen, here it is.
Yeah, so yeah, so I put the list in and the proposal and then I thought you might find it interesting to see the results from the surveys.
I don't even recall seeing a survey, did that go through like morning announcements? Or how, how did you disseminate it?
We can get to that when we're getting our slides, but it was sent out in Ms. Mars this week.
It was in April, right Cory, right before vacation?
Yeah, teachers posted it on the portal.
I think I had a blog about it.
The Richards put it out.
So the majority of the participants were Penbrook, you said?
That happened, yeah, that did happen, but it went out to everybody.
Okay.
All right, so do you guys want to?
Yeah, we'll start. We just put together a quick little synopsis of some of the stuff we did, our process, who's involved, that kind of stuff, through a quick little PowerPoint. Like we were saying, we had a lot of people on the committee, we had overall four different parents of students, current students, past students, we had seven teachers in Paris being represented, we had two school committee members, we had one principal, one assistant principal, and a superintendent. So overall, all of our meetings were very healthy in discussion from different views and, you know, walks of life, so it was, it was pretty productive. We had a lot of different conversations that went in a bunch of different directions. Our philosophy, we kind of came up with a mash of the overall reasoning and, you know, why we're kind of putting this stuff together and why we're trying to figure out if this is something that we would have wanted to suggest and wanted to bring up to you guys and move forward with. And we've kind of seen this concept ebb and flow over the last fifteen years. It comes a real hot topic during, you know, real hard winters and then during the softer winters, it's just a non-issue. We kind of put some data in there and talked about that and talked about the benefits of days during the school year, benefits of days at the end of the school year and that kind of went back and forth with us, made some conversation there.
So we started the process back in September and met at least once or twice monthly since then and tried to hash through as many of the issues as we could ourselves as a committee before putting the information out to the constituency. We looked at, we first started looking at a number of other district policies, a number of districts have plans in place, and so we took a look at those, we highlighted some of the key points, some of our concerns, which we also understood would be raised by our own teachers, families, parents. And so we tried to discuss it amongst ourselves, what we thought were the key issues, we put together our proposal, and then we put it out in Cory, I think, or someone will talk about those slides in a minute, the results of the, the surveys. But we then surveyed the, the teachers, we did it at a staff meeting, and so they saw the survey, but we also presented it to them. They brought up their issues in that meeting, special ed teachers, specialist teachers, so we were able to hear from all the different people who would be impacted by this proposal, take into account their concerns. And we also then the survey from parents came back and we listened to what they had to say. We actually went through all of the feedback because they were, teachers and parents alike were asked, you know, what do you agree with, what do you disagree with, what are your two main concerns? And we went through item by item, all of us as a committee, and tried to identify what were the themes. And so then we made some, a few tweaks and changes to our initial proposal based on those themes, but, and that's what you have in front of you.
So how easily attainable were the other districts' policy?
Very public.
Yeah, so no problem going in and locating them or anything?
Everything we found, we found a couple more as we went on also. Everything was either online or you brought a couple from a couple superintendent's meetings.
I had a few samples that came.
Good connections.
Yeah, we had good connections, that's right. But I think it was interesting because, you know, Cory's the Google guy, right? So, you know, he would post, he would put everything up on the screen and so as we had ideas, we would, we would, he'd type them in for us, so we were all on the same page and we were sharing documents and it was just a much more efficient way to, to do the work, that's for sure. But what we did is we literally made, you know, a grid that listed the school districts we looked at, the questions we had generated, that we said, if this is going to work in Georgetown, we have to at least be able to respond to any of these questions. And then we literally, groups broke up and, and we plugged in from those districts how those questions were answered, and then that gave us a really good global look at it and then we identified the areas we thought, you know, were consistent and then.
It was a study.
That's what it was, it was a study. It was, this is, I have to say, this is a wonderful committee, but the process was, functioned exactly the way you would want a study committee to function. You know, we started with what do we want to know, what are the questions we have, what's already out there that we can take a look at, you don't need to reinvent the wheel. Then we went and found out, you know, here's a proposal, react to it. And then when we came back, we said, okay, is this something that enough people said this is what, you know, we, we recommend you do and these are the concerns we have that we could work on for a year if we did a pilot. But, you know, it was such a great representation and, you know, the teachers felt differently than some of the parents did and that was fine. You know, I think everybody came to the table with very, being very respectful of each other in the process. So I, I'm so proud of, you know, being, being part of working with this group because I, I do feel like it worked the way it should work when you do something to study it.
So was everyone on the committee in agreement that, that they're all in favor of blizzard bags per se, like the, the concept of it and then obviously there's so many different things that you have to figure out, but is everyone on the committee in favor or are there some that aren't? Like the start school, like the later times?
We didn't like eventually take a vote, but it was the overall concept of, yeah, we're going to move forward with this.
Right. No one felt as though there were any issues that we couldn't overcome, or at least in the pilot year, tweak after we went through the year and looked back and said, what worked, what didn't work and how.
But I know what you're getting at, you mean like were there anybody completely opposed to that, just on the committee, like we had?
Right.
No, it was just, it was more of that study to see, can this be done?
Okay.
What's the best way it can be done for our district?
Right. And I think, you know, from different people sitting in different seats, they have different reservations.
Right.
I think everybody felt, I think everybody felt that enough of the questions were answered so that it was worth recommending it. Now, watch, next winter, there'll be no snow, right? And we won't have to use it.
There will be some of it.
But, you know.
This winter was, this winter was very mild.
Yeah, right, exactly. So again, we're, we're looking at this as it's something that we would have in place if we needed it, but there's still a lot of things to work out, right? So we have to figure out how are our teachers going to do, when are they going to have time to do these lessons? They're going to have questions about what exactly is, we still have to sort of talk about the different levels in grading them. And so there's, there's still details to work out, but everybody knows that, right? And that's why we wanted to say, but rather than commit to this forever, you know, let's take a year, let's, let's work it through, let's collect the data, you know, from people and then we'll see whether or not it's something that we want to go forward with.
Do some highlights.
Okay, we went over the roles and responsibilities for all staff.
Right.
We talked about teachers, service providers, so like guidance counselors, occupational therapists, speech, school administrators, technology staff, office staff, support staff, and kind of what their roles would look like. And then we created a frequently asked questions section, just, and that's in the proposal, stuff that we thought that parents might have questions about, that teachers might have questions about. One of the biggest questions was, will things be graded and if so, how will they be graded? There were questions about how long students would have to make up assignments, to do the work when they were out. Parents' roles, what's their role going to look like? Students on five oh four and I E P plans, how is that going to work? So those are some of our questions that were answered in the proposal that we talked through. And also how much time each grade was expected and we broke that down by grades, that was one of the questions that came up. And we did the surveys, for the teacher survey, we had forty-six participants, it was a mix between the schools and ninety-two percent of the teachers surveyed supported the proposal in some way. And in the parent survey, we had a hundred and forty-nine participant responses from all schools, but the majority were from Penbrook. And eighty-eight support percent supported it in some way.
Those numbers look small, forty-six participants, you know, we have a hundred and fifty-plus teachers in Paris, we kind of, we had some focus groups and stuff like that where people had conversations there instead of filling out the survey is what we found out, but overall.
Right, so we figured it would be better to do it at an actual faculty meeting rather than at this busy time of year to say to people, oh, here's a link, you know, fill this out, we'd like to hear from you. And we actually sent them out in advance just to help structure the conversation, you know, sort of three basic questions. So, you know, what are the things you like the best, what are the questions that this raises, and what are the challenges that you think that we're, we need to be thinking about? And then when we had the meeting, these guys did a great job of facilitating the discussion in small groups, so everybody, you know, could have the opportunity to share their, and then they reported out. So I felt like it was a good discussion as opposed to, we got up, we told them, and then silence, right? There was a good discussion about it. The biggest question that some teachers had, and it was mixed, was why wouldn't we start it on day one? Right? And so I think we all came to the, to the place where we said, well, you know, I, we hear that, but we want the teachers in front of the, the kids, this is something that we just don't want to, we want to minimize the number of days we have to go in June, so if we just do the first three days, then we could do blizzard bags after that and that would just, that was, felt like a good compromise, I think. And I think the teachers are, are fine with it. You know, teachers on the committee were fine with it, so.
So what is, the districts that you have here that you looked at, did, did any of them start on the first?
Yeah, Wakefield starts on, Wakefield starts on the day.
Maybe one of them started after day five, too, so.
Yes, that's right, it was all over.
Oh, okay.
Wakefield approaches this as, I think their title is learn anywhere, learn anywhere. And so, yeah, so, you know, so any, the first time a day is called, they, they'll do blizzard bags. And then they, they can vary that, but they just do it day one. But we, we thought that, you know, that a nice way to sort of, you know, compromise, I think it was really a compromise, was at least three. I think we had, I think Michael actually wanted five and.
And we literally, literally took a vote.
We literally listened to him and basically.
It was, raising if you want day six, raising if you want day one.
Yeah.
I would imagine that students would want some days off, too. I mean, they look forward to snow days, they kind of feel like every year they, you know, like to enjoy at least one, two, or three.
Yeah.
To go out and play in the snow, I don't know.
Yeah.
Actually, that was one of the concerns I'm about to talk about. Some parents were like, let a snow day be a snow day.
A snow day, yes.
So, that's actually not on here, but I thought I should mention it.
Oh, I think actually, yeah, I, that is.
But that is something that was said a couple of times.
Multiple times, yeah.
One big concern was, you know, how much support would the child need at home? And of course, that changed, you know, because of the grade level. So we had, you know, the parents expressing that are probably younger, have younger children. They were, they had questions about the amount of time to hand in the assignment. So we have, we have five days, you have five days to hand in the assignment. So a lot of people were questioning, why not fewer days, actually, not the other way, which is kind of interesting. Couple of questions about how the assignments would be assessed, rated, or is it more like feedback? So all these concerns, we, we tried to make sure we're in this proposal in its latest edition. And then the last concern was, how would students and parents access the assignment? You know, in the middle of high school, there's a lot of electronic communication going on, but you know, how would it happen in the earlier grades? So those are most of the parent concerns that we run about.
Okay.
So if we were to have a pilot year next year, we would still serve in a, kind of like a helpful role. We would try to support staff with creating assignments, like, you know, what would these assignments look like? And we could try to give them models of what they might look like. And of course, just troubleshoot and kind of receive feedback and see, like you guys said earlier, if this whole process would work well. And then at the end, we would review the policy and see, you know, if it's worth going ahead another year. And if it is, if there's anything to adjust, we would do that.
So you see why I enjoy working with this group, because most committees can't wait to be done, you know, we did our job and that's the end, and if there are details, oh well, you know, like, we'll figure it out. These guys are like, no, we, we want to see this through, you know, we want to, we want to be supportive. And so we do have representatives from all of the schools, which is great. We did meet with the cafeteria folks, so the cafeteria folks are not going to do, they're not going to work on the day and they're going to just make the time up at the end. But everyone else is, has something, as you can see in the proposal, that they're going to be responsible for doing. But we met with all of the groups that were impacted, in fact, us, a couple of us that were doing negotiations with Paris, this came up, what would the Paris do, remember? And we, we had resolved that. So again, the devil's always in the details, right? So we know that there are going to be questions that come up, but I love the fact that, you know, the committee's not walking away from it, that they're, they're saying, you know, let, let us see if we can help continue to work through the process. So that's greatly appreciated.
So with the cafeteria workers not participating and then the kids aren't in school at the end of the year.
They'll work at the end, they'll, they'll, they'll work in the kitchen at the end of the year, there's always.
Yeah, I know there's always, so just whatever, cleaning up and taking care of, like, getting prepared for.
Yeah, because it really, I mean, we can find, you know, meaningful things for, for others to do, right? But, you know, I mean, cafeteria workers, I'm not sure, we could have them do serve safe training, I guess, if we could do something online. But, you know, we worked through that with them and they said, you know what, there's actually things we really need to do at the end of the school year that we don't have time to do. So we welcome the opportunity to make up time during that period.
Okay. So when you say the devils are in the details, so I'd like to know some specific details.
What the devils are.
Yeah, I do. I'm not going to say anything that you haven't already heard before. The superintendent and I have been talking about this for a few years and obviously I am definitely one of those people that feel like a teacher in front of you, you can't compare that, you just can't. But am I interested in seeing a, you know, blizzard bag being rolled out? Yeah, I think, I think it's a great idea. I'm also with my colleague here to say that I think kids do also deserve a snow day. So I like the fact that, you know, you're doing it not per se the first, the first time around. But when I look at other districts that have rolled this out, being a resident of Melrose for most of my life, I tend to look at that district pretty, pretty frequently on, on how they do things. And the superintendent Tamar over there, I think she, she's in the paper quite a lot, like the Melrose Free Press interviews her a lot, so it's easy to get some information from her. But let me just ask you, some districts require a certain percentage of, of participants, so if it's less than eighty percent, then it just doesn't count. What are you guys thinking about that?
Yeah, when we looked at the numbers of the districts that did that, that followed that procedure, we found like basically none of them had that, less than eighty percent or eighty-five percent, ninety percent, whatever they, whatever the rate was that they set, whatever the bar.
Yeah.
We essentially, I don't know if I called it a non-issue, but we said, that's, we don't think that's going to be a big concern within our district. We have a very, you know, secure buy-in from students, from parents in general, and we, we didn't really see that being a challenge.
So are you going to, are you going to set a bar? Are you going to set anything?
No, that was not in the proposal.
For, for a couple of reasons, in addition to what Cory said, is that the data that the districts that are doing it, including Melrose, have found that more than eighty percent, and mostly in the nineties, have actually completed. They have five days to do it. Teachers will understand that they need to be supportive of, you know, helping kids, this gives children who might have had a struggle with it or something happened that they couldn't do it, gives them a chance to be supporting them, so there should be really nobody who really doesn't do the assignment. We also thought that there was a fairness issue with that, because if I say, you know, eighty percent of the school has to do it and seventy-eight do it, and all of these kids that did the work, now they got to be told it didn't matter? Like that just, we couldn't figure out a fair, what we called a fair way to do it. So, you know, the, the consequence, I guess you would say, if kids don't do it, is it doesn't count as a, a school day for them, they get an absence. So some people might say, hey, I want my kid to have a snow day, I'll take the absence. Okay, that, those are decisions that parents can make. We're trying to make the decision that we think is best for most people and I, I think we're all assuming positive intention, that people, you know, said that they thought this was worth trying, that everybody will try to give it the college try, and we just don't think it's, as Cory said, it's going to be a significant issue. We, we understand that, that some districts have done it, but I think that those districts have not found it to be necessary because they have high numbers of groups of people that actually accomplish it.
Okay.
So our consequence was really the grade and the counting as a day, basically.
So the timeframe that the student will be required to turn it in, you're going to go with five days?
Yes.
After the snow day?
Yes.
School days.
School days.
Five day, okay, so once they come back to school, then it's five school days.
School days, so we get one.
And they can turn it in any time during that time and teachers will probably welcome the opportunity to get it in, you know, not all at one time, you know.
We had a lot of people saying, just have it do the next day. If it's, if it's gonna be a day, have it do the next day. Or would it be a lot of people saying, well, if my child needs specific services, they need support on regular, you know, stuff they do in school. They should get some kind of support on this, right? So, you know, we kind of felt that was a.
True.
Sorry, it also gets a little bit to your point about, it still can be a snow day if they choose that. Because they have five days later to turn it in. So they're getting the advantage of the work and the snow day if they so choose. Some kids will get it done that day and that's wonderful, but other kids can wait.
Kids will just wait and add it on to their already, their homework load at, at that time.
So if, um, cuz it just occurred to me, so if it's, if a parent decides to have that day as an absent day, even kids during the school year if they're absent, they still have to make up work. How is this going to be handled?
So is it an excuse?
So this was one of the loopholes we found during our faculty, a meeting at the, uh, high school. Um, and it was, alright, well, uh, my kid's absent, well, that means by the, uh, policy, school policy, we have two days to do it. Okay, well, you got two days. Well, I was absent that day, I still have two days to do it during the snow day. Where's the, you know, where's the happy medium? What are we gonna figure out here? And that was one of the unanswered questions was, I don't know.
Right, that'll be something to look into because if you're absent, you still have to make up that work.
I think this is one of the ones we can't require.
Well, you can't, right, you can't require it, but you are, you are still assigning work. So that work would still have to be made up regardless that they take it as an absent day.
I think we should write that down as a, as something to, cuz we, we still would have, if the school committee says that we should, you know, they'll approve a pilot for a year, we still have to negotiate with the school committee, with the, uh, the, uh, union, unions. Um, yeah, so, I mean, this could be something that might come up again, you know. I, I, I wouldn't be opposed to the fact that the kid has to make up the work. But, and maybe that is an incentive for them to do it within the five days, if you're still gonna have to do it, you know. But as you're, you know.
Brought up from anything that I read, it says that, like, it's, it's just considered an absence.
But if you're absent during, you know, a school day, that's not a snow day. You still, it's your responsibility.
Well, you would get a zero for the assignment.
Put it in though, you get a zero.
Get a zero, that's kinda how, well, or what, whatever we decide because a zero really hurts you, you know. So, um, you know, we have to figure out that based on the grade level, like how that's gonna.
I have a, a teacher in our family who works in New Hampshire and she said that it was, um, yeah. Uh, pass, so the assignments were graded pass, fail.
We did see that a couple.
Would teachers have the option to do that if they wanted to?
That came up in, um, the teacher survey and the parent survey was, what grade level do you want to see this get a, what, what, when do you wanna see this starting to get assessed? You know, fifth grade and below was like, oh, we just want pass, fail. And everybody above was like.
And, and should it get, should it, and what does it count? Does it count as a test grade, a quiz grade, grade, a homework grade? So those are the, when you, those, I'm telling you, those are the details, right? So we have to, we have to work that. We have to work that, that out, in, you know, in the, in the year, right, to see how we're gonna, how we're gonna handle that.
So. One of the other questions that I, I want to see if you have, um, any answers to is the disruption that it causes the class when they come back from the snow day. Like to talk about, when the teacher decides to talk about that assignment, does that disrupt the current curriculum that the kid was learning prior to the snow day? Like, how much time is this assignment going to, how much time will it take in the classroom once they return? To discuss this, like, will be a full, like a full classroom day, like that they have or?
Ideally, it wouldn't be too much of a disruption at all cuz it would be within the content they're already learning.
It wouldn't be new content.
We're anticipating the content that they're doing at home to be within the realm of what they're studying now, within the classroom.
Okay, so what you do is, are you gonna like look at the curriculum and, and the calendar that the teachers obviously you, you make? And then say, okay, so in January through March, this is what we're gonna be working on. So the assignment's gonna be something related to that. So it's not gonna be totally off topic.
We were assuming this would become an issue, you know, come December, January timeframe. So once that timeframe hit, you know, the team, I would imagine, depending on, at least in, I teach third grade, so our team would get together. Alright, what is our trajectory over the next few weeks?
Yeah.
What could we realistically expect to cover that the kids could do? Because again, they need to do it relatively independently on their own, without too much support. So look at that, and, but it will change. We wouldn't put something together in December and then have that still be what we would deliver in March. It wouldn't be relevant anymore. But it wouldn't be new. So that when we came back, there might be some questions, I would imagine, from individual students who maybe are struggling. But if it's, if it's more than a handful, you know, I would imagine the teacher would probably address it in class. Otherwise, it would be something just to provide support later on, but.
Great answer.
Yeah. I don't think we're anticipating that, that this, the teachers are gonna take whatever the blizzard bag activity and make it part of the next lesson. That's not necessarily gonna be the case. Unless it's something that, you know, it, it's part of what they would plan to teach anyway, right?
Anybody else have questions while I'm looking through mine?
Sure. Well, I just wanna say that I appreciate all the hard work that this committee has put in to the, all the research and everything else. Um, it totally shows in this, um, presentation. I was wondering what special education is going to look like. Where special education is so individual for every child, where some kids have like a specialized program, like a Wilson, that has to be delivered by that special educator or.
That won't happen on a wrap day.
And how will that be, I guess, you know, based on an IEP? And.
Like what those parents have to be.
So when, when I, when I've listened to how, how other districts have handled that, they've said, if a child is absent for the day, they don't necessarily make up all the services. If, uh, if a, if it was necessary or a parent felt very strongly about it, then the district would do what it could to, to sort of make that time up. But if it's a day, most parents aren't gonna be overly concerned about that. It, you know, if it's, you know, three days in a row, and we did say, um, that the maximum number of wrap days that would be used in any given year is three. So if we had a year where we had nine snow days, we would be making those days up, the, the remainder of those days up. For, to deal with exactly what you're talking about. So what's the sort of magic number to not have it be impactful, even though we believe every day the student needs the services? But there are times that just naturally over the course of the year, for whatever reason, you know, the, the services, you know, are altered in some way.
Well, because there were specifics mentioned in here about special education teachers would be modifying the assignments.
That's right.
And whatnot, but again, everyone has such a individualized role, like a speech pathologist versus a physical therapist versus a, you know, so I'm just curious.
So, so if it needed to be made up, it would be made up sometime within the period. But if it didn't need to be made up, you know, the, the assignments that the students would be working on, classroom-linked assignments would be modified. Maybe with the number of problems they're doing or, um, you know, the level of, of depth that they're required to do. Um, but that, that would be, that, we, we insist that the teachers work together on that.
Just limiting to three, a maximum of three.
Yeah, should help.
Blizzard bag days is reasonable that, you know, if you have nine and you're missing nine Wilson lessons.
Yeah, right.
Make more difference.
Oh, absolutely. We agree with you.
We kind of viewed that break in services kind of as, you know, in a normal week, every now and again, we have a Monday off. You know, that, those services on a Monday, you know, holiday don't get made up if we have an assembly. You know, those don't explicitly get made up, you know, minute for minute. So we kind of looked at it as like that situation.
We would work with people who were concerned about that if there was a really legitimate reason to be concerned. This, this is the number one challenge that all districts worried about is the impact of special education students. And I know Jack and I met with the staff at the middle school, just the special ed teachers, to talk about, you know, how, you know, what do you think about this? How, how do you think this is gonna work for your individual children? And they said, well, we, we would know that, you know, when the child brought the assignment back, that we are gonna do what we can to make sure that everybody is successful.
Yeah, I would love to see what the assignments look like.
Yeah.
You know, which I know you're not at that point.
So would we.
Well, you know, I mean, you've done so much work already that, um, but I'd love to see it.
Yeah.
Examples at some point, you know, when they're created.
Jack, do, do your, Jack, do your kids have blizzard bags? In, cuz you live in New Hampshire. No, okay.
I wonder if that's something we could look into at Melrose to see.
See what? We, they, they actually have sample assignments.
There was a couple of districts that have, uh, a specific location.
I looked at Wakefield.
For all of their.
I think Burlington has a lot of their stuff posted, you know, too.
Is Burlington doing it again? Cuz I, I know, I thought they.
They were on the, they were at the, the committee, uh, the state committee. That, that group has not come out, come through with their guidelines yet. Remember I told you, I, I doubted April was gonna be a realistic date. So, so waiting for, the dis, the state is trying to put together a set of guidelines. And I think, actually, I think we're, we're kind of ahead of the game here. I, I feel like the guidelines they come up with are gonna be the same that we're, that we're addressing. You know, you have to give them enough time. You have to accommodate for the different learners' needs. You have to, uh, you know, make sure the assignments are flexible enough so all kids can do them. You know, those are the things I'm anticipating are gonna come up.
Well, one of the other things I know was sort of, you know, are teachers expected to be available via email on that day or are they not? They might have their own kids doing, working on blizzard bags at home and, like, so I, I know in here, did you say that?
Yeah, we put it in there, they were to be available throughout the day.
That doesn't mean.
Consistently throughout.
Yeah, they don't have to give up their whole day.
Because it's a day for them as well.
Yeah.
Right, but they're checking. And, and you know, the issue of, you know, so, you know, how do teachers get a, it's a free day for teachers. But it isn't a free day for teachers because they have to spend additional time on their own time. So we, we talked about that too. The district isn't providing time for them to create all these lessons. They, they have accepted that that's on their own time. Um, and they'll have to grade it, you know, again, on their own time. And they have to be available, you know, at least some portion of the day to just, just checking emails. So I think, but to troubleshoot, I mean, they, they, they are working differently than, that's the other question, is the equity. So if you're somebody who's not a classroom teacher, you know, you're working on your normal paperwork or whatever it is you're doing. But, you know, you're not needing to be accountable, you know, to, to parents, you know, to answer questions. So, but, you know, that's why we did it with everyone. We didn't just do it with the classroom teachers. We engaged at the faculty meeting, everybody that would be impacted by it. Because that would've been their time to say, no, foul, you know, why are we working so hard? And, you know, these guys over here aren't working so hard, you know. But we did feel it was important to list what those people would be doing. Cuz it's, it's a professional activity. That's the way we're treating it. It's like, you know, we're treating people like this is gonna, you, you will do your professional responsibilities on that day to the extent that you, that you can.
So, so tell me, so as far as equity is concerned, so what would that look like for all across?
I don't think there's a way to make it equitable. That's why, that's why.
No, well, like, one of the districts, and I went, being, I looked at, um, this was in New Hampshire. Um, district Wolfboro, New Hampshire, not Maine, but they, what they were saying is that administrators, um, classroom teachers and specials, they didn't necessarily say like paras or, you know, all had specific, um, students that they would be responsible for. That's how they got like the equity thing. And then they would have, they would meet with those kids before the snow day would happen, just so they were, you know, familiar with them. Like say, when, one student got assigned, you know, like Jack and they didn't know Jack. You know, so they'd kind of set that up, so.
That's interesting. We, we didn't, we didn't.
We just kind of laid out what we thought the rules and responsibilities would be. We kind of put that in the packet of, you know, every specific employee that this would affect.
At in the second iteration if we thought that was important. I don't think teachers have a hard time saying what they did during that day, you know, and I don't think anybody had a hard time with that. But it was just in terms of, it, it is a little, it is, it is a different role. It is a different role every day, right? So that's what we were also saying is, you know, you can't try to make something equitable that isn't equitable ever. It, everybody has a different role to.
Some teachers work off time anyway.
Yeah. Right, and.
Well, like for, for a school nurse.
Right.
If you're not, not.
If you don't have kids, yeah.
But I know that during that day, there's a lot that goes into that.
Well, they're, they can, you know, everything is online now, right? So you can update your records. You can, you know, write, uh, you know, newsletters, you know, to, uh, you know, some upcoming thing that's going on. There's, there's work that you would be doing if you were in school. I mean, clearly, they'd be working with kids most of the time. But usually the nurses are always talking about how they wish they had more time where they could, you know, same thing with secretaries. You know, that usually their work is, you know, interactive day to day with the people that are there. But they, they die for time when they can get in the Reddick or database and make sure that they're, they're checking for things. So, you know, they all had suggestions as to what they would work on. Nobody said, oh geez, I, I don't think we'll find anything to do, except the cafeteria people said, it's kind of a waste of time for us. So, but that's kind of, nobody seemed to be mindful of the equity because it's kind of like you said, it's, like we said, it's every day it's different for the work you do.
So when it says like grades nine to ten and seven to eight, you know, twenty-five to thirty minutes a subject. So that wouldn't be, would that be just the core subjects as well?
No, it's supposed to be every subject you would have in, in that day, basically.
Really?
So specialists, we, cuz Brian isn't here tonight, but Brian Fanning was, is on the committee and, uh, he's a specialist.
The music teacher?
Yeah, so he was talking about how he would meet with the grade level. And, you know, he had, had ideas of how he would have the kids be doing things at, at home that would link. So, yeah, but then the art, you know, you, everybody, so that's what they said, is that they would have something planned. For the students, just like anybody else. I'm sure the art teachers at the middle high school will post something on Schoology that they expect the students to do.
You guys did a very thorough job in trying to figure out exactly who would be, um, involved with this, so.
You know, I think, I think when, when you start thinking about something, you should think, oh, it's, 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 it's easy.
Yeah, why not?
But boy, there's a lot of nuances that we discovered.
Well, several years ago, when Joe Patella talked to us about it, we were like, of course, that, that's awesome. And then all of a sudden, it's like, well, what about what this, what about this?
That's right, that's what we had to do.
I forgot. So, um, so I don't think you left any stone unturned, so that's, that's good. I don't know, I, I think it's great.
I just have, um, one, one suggestion is, you know, I, I'm a big believer in communicating with everybody through the website. And I know it would be, this is gonna be different, obviously, at every grade as, as it says in here. But I would think maybe to have a link, one link that's really obvious and easy for parents who are unfamiliar with, you know, with the plan and the idea. And I know the teachers will have been communicating and trying to get through to them. But, um, just to have, you know, one basic link that talks about the philosophy um, and, and tells parents where to go to get more specifics about their child's, what's going to happen for their child.
Having a.
I mean, it could almost be a, a static thing, but just something describing the program. And I'm sure when you did research for, at other districts, there was.
Where we found it.
Right, so if we have.
Why reinvent the wheel, right?
A similar type of link on our website somewhere that's easy to find would be a great idea.
Yeah.
Important.
So none of the districts surrounding us do it?
No. Penn Tucket. And I think Amesbury started it last year. They did a pilot last year.
They did, yeah.
Yeah, Amesbury did a pilot last year. I remember that now.
Yeah, you, you.
Yes.
You talked about to us about that.
We did. Yes.
So North Andover did, that's right.
I don't think any of the, the big, the big union didn't do it, the big union districts, cuz they have a lot more.
Yes, she's, yeah, thank you for coming, Joanne. That was so nice.
Sorry for keeping you so late.
No, she, she had, her daughter, prom, right? Her daughter. Their final chorus. And she's gotta go to, she's gotta go some distance. So, thank you for coming, Joanne. She wanted to come. I said, dog, we excuse you from this. And she said, no, she said, I'm, I'm gonna come, so.
That's great.
It was great that she did. What was it? I, what were we just asking?
Just about the, the surrounding.
Yeah, I know Penn Tucket did, cuz at one point we were talking to Amanda, um, cuz then the question came up about the preschool was one of the questions, right? Um, and Amanda was sharing with us, Amanda Harding, cuz her son goes to Penn Tucket, so how that, how that worked there. So I think there's enough people that are doing it, so we could, if we wanted to grab some assignments, just to see what the depth, you know, was, but, you know.
So then, so we'll do the pilot next year.
Yeah.
And then you'll then do a follow-up. You'll kind of go back and debrief and figure out, talk to the teachers, get the parents involved, get the students involved, and then kind of just see what the overall.
Yep, that's the plan.
Yeah, well, I just appreciate the thoughtful process. Because, um, again, like you said, wow, that's a cool idea. But then you really have to think, oh, well, what about this? What about that? Yeah, what about this? And you're not gonna know how it works until you try it.
Try it, that's right.
Yeah, it's worth, it's worth a try, especially after the last couple of winters that we had, you know, this one, not including this one. But you had a good, um, group of people too.
Yes.
You know, the stakeholders that you had, I, I agree, between the, did you, no students though?
We didn't have students on this.
That, that came up at the very end. We're like, alright, awesome, we did these surveys. Did we ask the kids?
Well, well, we, well, no, I think we weren't sure what we were gonna get from the kids. Like, if, if, the decision wasn't really the kids.
Yeah.
So we thought.
You know, they'd be like, yeah, of course.
Right, that, so I think that we, we thought that the better use of the student feedback would be after we do it. Then, then they have something to actually speak to.
Right, yeah.
So that, we, so we didn't, but we consciously discussed that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, students love snow days until you mention the fact that it's gonna extend.
Yeah, I know.
In June, and then it's like, oh.
Gotta make up, right.
Yeah.
You know, the morning of, when you get the snow days, like, ah.
Right.
And then, you know, when you have to go to school on that Monday of the next week, you know, it's like.
Right, yeah.
But.
Right. Okay, so, um, I will make a motion, um, then to approve the RAP proposal as a pilot program for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year as, as presented.
So moved.
Second, uh, discussion, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks again.
Thank you so much.
Being part of the committee for coming out tonight too.
A lot of work.
Guys did a great job. So now, now we go forward.
Yeah, I'm excited.
Alright, thanks again. Have a good night. Okay, we have a health and wellness committee update.
Looks like Colin's gonna be the update.
Here I am.
Thank you again for helping me, uh, last week.
Yeah, of course.
Amazing.
Yeah, Dominic hooked up good.
I guess if Colin can't do it, nobody can.
I know. I emailed him a, a problem and within like twenty minutes, my son's getting what he needs.
What he needs.
Yeah, it was great.
Good.
And you know what? I, you would do that for, like, I look at it, I'm like, he would have done that for anybody.
Oh, no, he would.
Yeah.
Like, he, you know, we were very, um, quick with that, so thank you.
No problem. So I'm here today, uh, to represent the, uh, Health and Wellness Committee. Uh, our chairs couldn't attend today, but they sent a, uh, a little report for me to read to you all. And, uh, they go with some of the, some of the photos up here, which are from the, uh, the Health and Wellness Fair, uh, that happened in April. So, uh, we had another successful Health and Wellness Fair this year. There were twenty participants and approximately two hundred attendees. The Georgetown Fire and Police Departments were there. The police were a big hit with the, with their fatal vision glasses.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there are a couple pictures here of, uh, some students trying to. Now, sobriety test, uh, with some glasses on.
I, I actually had a dad.
Pam helped, yeah.
Pam had the table.
Uh, we had several repeat participants, Georgetown Cares, Georgetown Family Dentistry, Georgetown Massage, Precision Chiropractic, Partners in Rehab, uh, WIC, and Laughing Tree Organics. Two Georgetown High School students, Erin and Sarah, ran a teddy bear hospital. There's a picture of that in a second. Giving children a chance, uh, to be doctors and nurses for sick and injured stuffed animals. The Food Service Department and the Georgetown Boosters were both there, and a nurse was checking blood pressure. This year, we were excited to have several new participants offering various health services, Euphoria Cycling, Blossom Healing, Lotus Massage and Wellness, and the Lice, Lice Center of Danvers. CrossFit One Thirty-Three got people moving with games in the middle of the gym. Members of the trauma team at Lawrence General Hospital presented information on the Stop the Bleed Program and taught the proper use of a tourniquet and other methods to control severe bleeding. A representative from the Mass DOT had informed, uh, had information on their Safe Routes to School Program. We've already started thinking about what else we can do for next year. The Health and Wellness Committee has already met three times this year and have our last meeting of the year next week. Um, two of our main focuses this year were substance abuse and vaping. Next week, Judy Crocker from Mass DOT is coming to talk to us about safe school, uh, safe routes to schools and the services they have to offer us. They came to Penbrook last year and presented lessons on bike safety and pedestrian safety. Uh, so that's the update. A few more pictures, just a roll-through from the Health and Wellness Fair. Some blood pressure for students. CrossFit table, a few of the other vendors.
There is the hospital.
Yeah.
Puppy Dog Hospital. And, uh, one of the booths that was there. So, uh, very well attended. I'm thankful to the chairs and the rest of the committee and every, all the community members and organizations that, uh, that helped out. Um, it seemed to be a very well-attended and successful event, so.
I think it's really a smart idea to have it on the same day as the Kiwanis Breakfast.
Yeah. You're bringing people in already.
As you have an all-you-can-eat breakfast with plenty of, uh, carbs and cholesterol and on the, and next room over here, about how to be healthy and well.
Kind of walk it off, you know?
But it's, but it is a great idea, cause it captures, like, you know, a broader audience.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I wanted to give one other small update, just on the, on the curriculum side, in terms of Health and Wellness. Little update on something that the team had worked on last year, which was, uh, looking at a new, um, Health and Wellness Curriculum Program, uh, which was the Too Good for Drugs, uh, program that, that Georgetown Cares, uh, was nice enough to sponsor. Um, and I just have a couple, um, a couple photos here. These are from Shay Matthews, uh, who's the Wellness Teacher at the Middle High School. She did a lot of, uh, the heavy lifting to organize that program as part of a master's program and make sure that, um, that curriculum was rolled out successfully at the middle and high school. And then, uh, at the Penbrook School, uh, we are rolling out that program after teachers finish their social emotional learning curriculum from the second step. So, uh, we have some letters that are gonna be going home to parents in a little bit to let them know about this new program. And then probably in the month of June, uh, the Penbrook students will, will get this new program. But I just wanted to highlight a few things that Shay shared with me, because she's done a wonderful job of incorporating this into her wellness class. And a couple of the cool things that this program has to offer to really make the, uh, the concepts and ideas really sync, uh, sync in with some of our older students. Um, so they have different, different games, uh, that hit on both the social emotional aspect and then reinforcing some of the more drug and alcohol awareness, uh, programs. So this is a game called Roll Call. I think this is where students have to determine, uh, what type of risk behaviors different, uh, characters have in a game and categorize them. Um, so it got students up and moving. And one of the things that I've heard from, uh, from Ms. Matthews. Very engaged. He's got the card in his hand. He's, he's participating. But, uh, one of the things that Ms. Matthews has mentioned time and time again is how engaging the activities are. And, you know, a lot of times with, with content like this, you can get a lot of eye rolls. But, um, they're real-world scenarios. They're, they're kind of based in the world that our students are living in. I have, so here's, um, uh, effective communication lesson, um, from the program. And it asks students to take a survey about, um, you know, how, you know, what, what type of communicator are you? And to kind of do some self-monitoring, um, and then, you know, what's your, what's your style of communication? Um, so that they can recognize that there are pros and cons to how you may communicate with your peers. Which is obviously, you know, important when it comes to some conversations that you might have with peers about risky behaviors. Um, and how you wanna, you know, make sure that, that you're standing up for yourself in those instances. Um, this is another game, kind of a fact or fiction. I believe this was on, uh, the effects of THC on the brain. Um, so again, putting that, that content and that, that science-based, uh, content in the hands of our kids, but give, letting them explore that in a way that, that, uh, is fun for them. Um, I think there's another, oh, so that's, hold on, I don't wanna get there yet. I wanna go back to those. Um, so this is, right, the effects of, this goes along with the game that students were playing. Here's the board. Um, but then this is another student-based survey, all about, um, your risk-taking style. And kind of giving you different scenarios, and students had to select what type of, you know, in a situation, what would you do? And how far of a risk would you take? And in some instances, we want our students to take risks and put themselves out on the, on a limb and do something that, uh, that they, you know, might put them in the, in an uncomfortable situation in an appropriate place. And other times, we obviously wanna, you know, encourage our students to, to not make that risky behavior and that choice. So this is a, just a good activity that students, um, can kind of self-monitor. And then you get into the content of, right, the effects of THC on the brain, um, when, when it comes to actual, you know, drug and alcohol awareness. Um, but going back, this was a forensics unit. And, uh, Officer Britton, the, the SRO came into all of the wellness classes to help students with a, a mock forensic, um, kind of, I think they had to look at a potential crime scene and, and get, uh, find the different forensic evidence of, uh, what was in that crime scene. So she had her and a colleague of hers come in and help our students, uh, with that lesson, which is always great. And she's been very helpful in, in making those connections with students, just to have, you know, another person that is, you know, looking, looking out for our kiddos and making sure that they're making the best decisions, have the most up-to-date information, and, uh, and can, you know, make the right choices. So I just wanted to share a couple of those things. And then the last thing is, um, Ms. Matthews is working on digitizing, uh, this curriculum so that students can access it and respond to it through, um, Google Forms. So this is like a worksheet. Um, Too Good for Drugs supplied us with student workbooks. Um, but since we're a one-to-one school now, we wanted to make sure that, that we were giving that opportunity for our students. So she basically took the questions from the worksheet and put it into a Google Form that then students could, could take. So the student could use their iPad and the teacher can get instant feedback on how students are doing on that assignment, so. Just a few things that she shared with me that I wanted to report back to the committee, um, just to let you all know how this program is going in its first year of implementation.
Wow, that's great.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So at Penbrook, it has yet to be.
Correct, yeah. So we were, we're rolling out two programs at Penbrook in the, in the vein of social emotional learning. And, uh, so, uh, first and foremost, Second Step was kind of our, our tier-one full-school baseline. Um, and that has about thirty lessons over the course of the program, I think.
Probably.
Sure.
We, we planned it that there would probably be about maybe six weeks of the Too Good for Drugs.
Right, so, um, right, of those thirty-ish lessons, there are four units in, uh, Second Step. Um, and teachers are doing one lesson per week, um, so you, you move through that. And then around this time, some people are do, wrapping up, they're in their last unit, they have some culminating, you know, activities. Um, or wanna review some of the things that they did earlier in the year, so that, um, in a couple of weeks, most of our teachers will be ready to roll out the, the six weeks or so lessons from Too Good, um, to hit, uh, all of our students in Georgetown.
So what grade would it be over at Penbrook?
So that's K-six.
Really?
Yep, and it's all, uh, one of the, yeah, one of the things that, one of the things that, uh, Ms. Mar and I, uh, looked at are kind of the, the developmentally appropriate, um, aspects of, of, uh, some of these, um, subjects with, with younger students specifically. Um, for the most part, I think Too Good has done a good job of making it, you know, appropriate for students. There are some instances where we, we wanna make sure parents know that we're doing this and that, you know, that we'll give them the heads up, which is why, um, I just received a, a few sample letters from the Mendez Foundation, which, which hosts this. And said, I said, you know, what, what do you guys have for parents, so we can let them know, you know, what this is all about, and, you know, so they can feel prepared. So that students start coming home saying, I learned about X today without, without knowing what.
Can they, can they opt out of that? Like, if they choose to, like, what's?
The law says they can opt out of sexual content, not anything else.
Really?
Yeah. The good thing about Too Good, especially on the, um, the younger grades, is it's, it, it very closely mirrors a lot of the social emotional learning components. Because it's all about, right, um, you know, making good choices and, and communicating with your friends and letting the right person know when you're having a problem, um, and managing yourself. So there are a lot of parallels to, um, our Second Step and our Too Good Program. Now it's just looking, using some of those SEL, um, lessons in a different context when it might come to, you know, drugs, alcohol, prescriptions.
Have you sat in on any of the, um, lessons over at, um, Penbrook?
For the Second Step?
Yeah, for Second Step.
I haven't sat in on any of the lessons, but I've seen the lessons at work when students are moving through the hallways or that they're, they're talking with others. I'm sure Ms. Mar could speak more about, um, kind of seeing Second Step permeate. I know I've talked to a few teachers that have students in the district and they know, you know, they've shown me videos of their students, uh, kind of reiterating some of the Second Step lessons, kids making songs up about empathy and all that good stuff.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
So it's filling outside of the classroom?
Yeah, and I think that, that's obviously what it's meant, well, obviously what it's meant to, so you don't want it to be static. You do the lesson and then you forget about it until the next week.
Yeah, we said it's gotta be a school-wide.
Yep.
Well, that's good.
Yep.
Well, thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Colin.
Thank you very much. Okay. And I wanna say thanks to Colin.
Yep.
Over at Andover, the middle school, we're piloting Second Step.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, he's got a, he's got a buddy he knows over there, I think. I think, yeah, there's a connection.
That's great. Okay, um, we can do, um, subcommittee reports.
Yeah.
Before we get into subcommittee reports, actually, um, PM, um, attended once again the Day on the Hill, so why don't we just?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Give you an opportunity to let us know what happened that day, what, you know, how the experience was.
Sure, I, I mean, I, I love going there. It's just, it's so inspiring to see, to, to be in the State House and, and to hear, you know, they, they bring us in to begin with. And we hear from all kinds of legislators and representatives and senators, and we heard from the auditor Suzanne Bump. We heard from people at, at the, on the Committee of Education. Um, I wish, I forgot to bring my notes, so I'm sorry if I'm not, not being specific enough. But, um, it was just, you know, and some students were there too, which I would really someday love to, you know, maybe take some of our students.
Yeah, tag along.
Like, yeah, I have a draft of an email already to go to Mr. Hastings, just to suggest maybe to, maybe to begin with AP, you know, hit, uh, government students. Because it's really, you know, you, you get to see democracy in, in action. And the halls of the State House are, I mean, it's like a museum. They're so beautiful. All these, all these paintings and, and staircases and architecture. And then the, of course, I've spoken about the lunch before. That is a highlight of the day as well.
I knew we were going there.
Um, yeah, uh, you know, I don't know, about twenty different vocational schools throughout the state.
That's neat.
Yeah, send their students and, and, you know, the food is just out of this world, delicious. They're all in little chefs', you know, uniforms and, and presenting and serving and, and asked, answering questions and, uh, you know, they, they have everything. When you first come in, the, um, students are, have trays of seafood chowder and it's, it's hot. That they give to you, which is just out of this world. Um, and then, you know, there's, I mean, there's tables and tables. It's in the Hall of Flags. Um, and so, you know, and then you get to sit down and talk with other people from school committees and some superintendents at, at different tables. Um, not, not too many superintendents actually, but more, more school committee members. Um, and, and that's a wonderful thing. And then in the afternoon, I make an appointment to go see, uh, and speak with Senator Tar and, and Representative Mira. Um, and, which is always a delight, and they're just so.
Yeah, they're so supportive.
So supportive and welcoming and really, you know, they, they want, I, I can tell they're, they're very invested. They want to hear about, um, you know, what our concerns are. So I spoke about public education funding. Um, Carol, you and I had discussed a little bit before that. You know, there is something right now in the legislature called the, the Promise Act.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that kind of, it's focuses on, on the recommendations of the, the, um, what was the chapter?
Foundation, Foundation Rejection.
Right, right, Budget Commission. Um, and those recommendations focus on, I see, special education, ELL, low income, and something else.
Health insurance.
Health insurance.
Transportation is in there too.
That's right. Right, and so, yeah, and I also spoke about, you know, the need for Circuit Breaker to be funded at the originally agreed amount of seventy-five percent. And also potentially of lowering that the threshold for when that kicks in. And, and of covering transportation, because transportation is just something that's completely, it goes crazy and we have zero control over it. And.
And this must be all things that all of their other, um, school districts are telling them too. I mean, this isn't.
Oh, right, I'm sure, yeah. They, they've heard probably, you know, what I've been asking and what I was asking about. There were also some other, um, you know, bills in the legislature about school funding, uh, in it, that we, we discussed. And, I mean, we're all on the same page. I didn't, you, you know, they completely understand, you know, they, what our needs are. And they're, they're doing everything they can. And it's sounding, you know, sounding hopeful. Um, you know, we don't, I also discussed with them, uh, tobacco product regulation, uh, because I think that's really important. I think kids, uh, y- young people are being targeted by big tobacco. And we need strong regulation, um, at the state level to really, you know, to, um, mod, to manage or to restrict flavor, flavor in tobacco products. Yeah, because that's really withdrawing so many young people in. And to restrict the, the media, um, because if you look at the, you know, particularly the Juul advertisements, there are all these, you know, cool, young.
Yeah. Now they're trying to restrict it, that they could only sell it in places that are twenty-one and over.
Yes, yes.
So like, you know, like that whole story, twenty-one and over to go in and buy.
It's not like the gas sta, because gas stations right now can sell them right to eighteen and, yeah.
That they're trying to restrict it, that you can only get it.
But, you know, unfortunately, online, it's hard.
Well, the regulation online, because a lot of times kids will say they're eighteen.
Right.
Right, and, and how, how is that checked? So there's a set of regulations about that.
That's right.
Um, you know, it, so.
It does sound though, like all the right people are on.
Are talking about it.
Are talking about it, and they know that it's a big problem.
They're calling it an epidemic.
It's an epidemic. It is, and it's, you know, to hear like, people say like, everybody does it. I know you've been hearing that forever, but, you know what? It does seem like everybody's doing it.
Right, well, I mean, because, yeah, I mean, we, we, it's very new and it's, you know, growing at, at an incred, use, youth use of it is, is growing. I mean, you know, and, and, and they, it, it, there's so little research about it. A lot of, they don't, either they don't know or they don't believe how dangerous it is.
And that's what I'm afraid of, is years down the line, or, you know.
And so we need funding for more research to be done.
Right.
Um, absolutely, because I, you know, there's already a lot of evidence that, that these chemicals, you know, they can cause. cause cancer, they correlated with mental health, um, you know, diagnoses and, uh, so. But I, I found, you know, both of our legislatures, our, our representative and, and our senator, very caring, very concerned, very responsive. Um, and I also discovered that they have regular office hours in Georgetown every month on the second Tuesday of the month at eleven o'clock in the senior center.
Oh.
And so I actually went down to see them this Tuesday and they said, this, they had both legislatures, legislators had other things that they needed to be doing, so they sent their representatives, I, I know that they're there some months.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, and they, the representatives were very, also responsive and wanted to listen and there were other people that came, actually, you don't have to be from Georgetown to go and, and visit them, where there were some people from Newburyport. And so again, I, we discussed, you know, public, uh, education funding and, and tobacco product regulation and again, they were very, you know, they heard, they heard what people had to say and, uh, very responsive.
Right, well, thanks for taking the time.
Glad you go every year, Pam, I always have the best plans, I just can't free my time.
No, it's hard, it's a busy time of year.
I, I enjoy it.
Don't hear about it, like, soon enough, you know, like, you know, I think they just need to put that date out, like, well in advance.
Yeah, I have to say this, you know, I, I just, I enjoyed the whole day from start to finish.
It was a lousy day this year too, I think, I think it was rainy and I think a lot of people.
A little bit rainy.
Yeah, didn't go because of that.
And the first part of it was not in the State House because of renovations, but next year, I think all the renovations will be done and the whole event will be in the State House.
Yeah.
Um, but in any case, I, I intend to continue going because I, you know, I get so much out of it, so I'd love to go any time. Um, yeah, yeah, it's not hard to go in there, find a, reserve a parking space, I'd love to go in with you, yes.
I used to work there. Why is Jack still there?
Well, because he wondered.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because he's one of those very detailed lot, you know, people.
Yes.
So we just wanted to make sure that you saw this, um, so we had that onsite visit.
Yes.
And, and we had one partially implemented thing, which they told us we, we were gonna get and they said, everybody gets the same one, because this is sort of a new regulation. But Jack, just before he left, he wanted to see if you had any questions about it.
Can you, can you come up here? Do you mind? Yeah, do you want to just explain a little bit about it?
Sure, sure, so, um, we have a tiered focus monitoring review, which happens every three years. And this year, they were looking, um, at some specific compliance areas, so there were nine areas for special education that they looked at. Sixteen areas for civil rights. For their onsite visit, uh, there was a representative from the Department of Ed who walked through all three buildings, had opportunities to interview some staff members, uh, most members of the administration. Carol gave the tour currently.
Yeah, I did, and did she talk to me privately yet?
And then, um, based on all of that, we did have one area within the civil rights realm that, um, was not fully implemented. So we got a partially implemented reading for that. All the other areas of compliance, uh, were fully implemented. The one that wasn't is called the institutional self-evaluation and, um, Carol is correct, um, certainly on my list served with other special education directors. Um, this is sort of the bane right now, that everyone is asking, what, what did you do for this and how did this piece work? So, um, basically what, uh, it entails is the administration taking a look yearly to make sure that all of our programs are fully accessible. And that would include extracurricular activities, um, sporting events, things like that to all students, including all the protected subgroups. So we have to have a plan in place to evaluate all of our programs, so.
Can you give me an example?
What we're gonna, he's gonna tell you what he's gonna do.
Well, I'm just saying what there's, like, an example of that.
So an example would be if, um, students of color were unable to be a part of a specific club after school.
Oh, okay, okay.
Or special education students were not eligible to participate on sports teams.
Okay.
Right, so, um, the basic premise is that we would develop what's called an equity team, which, uh, Carol did put out on her grapevine last Friday, was it? Yeah, um, to let staff know that this would be coming. And essentially, um, it's developing a team that would do some walkthroughs during the year. Um, walk through buildings, make sure that, um, there's access to, uh, whether it be for people who have mobility disabilities as an example, make sure that they can access, uh, all areas of buildings. Um, another example would be taking a look at our, all of, uh, our students who participate in athletics. And then, um, seeing if any of them are low income, um, have special needs and sort of looking at the percentages of that, if you will, and so if we're at sixteen percent special education students within the district, then sixteen percent of, of our sports teams should, uh, have kids that have special needs on them. So those are the types of things that we'll be looking at during the year. So the, um, the state has officially, as of today, accepted our, um, action plan in order to meet that, so the report did come in today.
Okay, good.
Um, I was actually reading it during Colin's wonderful presentation. And the report basically says exactly what I just told you, you know, they looked at the areas of compliance, they spoke, uh, to staff members, they also spoke to the CPAC. Um, and there was, uh, a parent survey that was completed as well, I neglected to say that earlier. So all of that is just listed, uh, within the report and then it has, uh, my action plan at the end of the report and says that that was approved.
So good, so by June eleventh, you're gonna have a equity team in place, so how many people will that consist of are you looking for?
I would think it may be what, eight?
Yeah, well, we just want a good representative sample.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, okay, did you get anybody interested yet?
I haven't, yeah.
So is this all staff?
No, well, I think it's in.
We'd like to include a parent.
We'd like to include a parent, we did talk about that. So we were looking for, yeah, representatives across the district, yeah, to start with, and some of the administrators for sure. Because they run buildings, right, so we, and I think Ryan Browner. You know, we weren't sure if everybody had to be a member of the equity team. But depending on what we needed to look at, we, we tap into, like, so for example, Ryan would have information on the num, you know, the, the rosters first and then Jack would have information on special ed kits and so we'd have to do a crosswalk. Because we still have to protect confidentiality.
So then, so this team then is gonna, will have reviewed ten district policies to ensure access to all protected parties.
So to make sure that all of our policies are completely updated to include some of the new protected classes.
Right.
Um, so some of the newer ones are for homelessness.
Right.
Yeah, so just making sure that they're all updated.
Well, good, I'm glad it was accepted today, that's good.
Yeah, so, and actually, when you see the report, so I'll, I'll print it out and make sure that it's distributed. They, uh, the report doesn't have the full action plan in it, it just basically says that well, we will report all of those things that are written on what you have at the end of the year next year.
Okay.
So they basically just shortened it in the report.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the, the woman from the state was very complimentary and very positive.
Good, that's great.
Great communication with her.
Yeah.
Not that we don't always with the Department of Ed.
So the, so then the full report will give us, you know, all the ones.
It'll give you the broad, the broad report.
Yeah, the, the report honestly doesn't have a ton of information and it, it was like five pages long and it really, what I just read to you.
Remember, this isn't the full CPR, so this is a, this is a, and they're, they're, they said they're changing their philosophy. Because usually, um, those kind of audits or reports are, are kind of all compliance and they can tend to be a little gotcha focus.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, that's not at all what the state is trying to do now, they, they really want to come in and find out what you're actually doing. Um, and start from a premise of, you know, we believe you're doing the right things, we just need to see it, basically. And then offering some helpful suggestions.
But it will be a little more, um, this, they're looking at more when they come back in three years. So as an example, off the top of my head, I know there's fifty-five areas of compliance for special ed.
Yeah.
They looked at nine when they came this time, so they're gonna look at the remainder of those when they come next time.
And you never know what those, what those are.
Oh, no, we do, we do, because there's a.
They're the same as they always are, really.
Well, there's a self-study component to it.
Okay.
So I have to submit evidence ahead of time.
The time that, when they come and you, they just pull student records, what is that?
So the same, same thing.
Okay.
So, um, what happens with that, so that'll happen at the next, there's no record review, uh, for the, what they used to be called the mid-cycle, it's not called that anymore, but so there's no record review for that, but there will be the next time that they come. So a district our size typically in the past has had to, um, have twenty-five files available for review for students who have special education needs. The state sends me a listing of, as an example, they want four files for students that have a specific learning disability, two files for kids that are placed out of district and so on and so forth. So I produce that to them, so I do have the capacity to sort of choose the, the files based upon the regulation that, that they set in place.
Okay.
Now, when they come, if they're dissatisfied for any reason, they have the right to pull any file that they want. Um, I don't, you know, I certainly don't anticipate that.
No, that hasn't happened.
It could.
Could, but it hasn't.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good, well, I appreciate you hanging around to, um, talk to us about that. So that's good, I hope the, um, equity team gets together, hopefully you'll have some people interested in.
Yeah, I've already had a few people who have reached out to me.
Good, great, great. All right, thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
Have a great night. Okay, so we'll do subcommittee reports, did you have a question?
I was just reading something very important, English.
Something, oh.
Um, budget and finance, we are meeting next week. But we haven't met for a while.
Well, once the budget's over, right, once, then you, you should, you should get a break.
Yeah, yeah, we should get a break, but we do have a few things to talk about, so. Sure, yeah, well, the process, the budget process was, um, I mean, it's always difficult, but it maybe isn't the right word, but it, um, it played out very structured, very organized, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we want to talk about is we don't want to miss the opportunity to um, continue the conversation with the town about the special ed stabilization fund. So, you know, Ed Dobie, after the budget process concluded, said he would be very interested in, you know, continuing to pursue that and starting conversations. So, you know, I asked to put it on the agenda just so we can be on the same page and then we should reach out to Ed and yeah, I think that can be a, a summer project, because they wouldn't be able to vote on that happening anyway till the fall, to the Fall Town Meeting. But, you know, we, when we have a little bit more time, we do have some models of places that have done it and they all sort of do it in a slightly different way. Um, but, you know, the goal would be to try to figure out some plan where there could be some money set aside. And if we had to access it, rather than always freezing the budget, we'd have the ability to do that, so. But the, the devil's in the details, right, so we have to figure out how that, how that could work. But I know that's something that, you know, is on the agenda to talk about.
Okay, um, governance, you guys?
Um, we are also meeting next week.
Yep.
But we did meet, um, a few weeks ago, right?
Couple of weeks ago or so.
We're working on the gender equity policy and we've we've been doing a lot, like, we started and then we threw that out and then we are, look, you know, we started over.
A new draft that's, that's very strongly based on what the law says. It's just kind of taking the law and trying to make, put it into policy language. Um, and you're taking, augmenting it a little bit with what we really liked from other district policies, like definitions.
Yeah.
Um, but we think this second draft is, is gonna be an improvement.
Oh, good. Uh, negotiations, we haven't met, we have no reason to. Um, public relations?
We have not met, no. We're that good.
Let's put a positive spin on it.
I love it.
That is public relations. So we did change, uh, some of the timeline around due to the change in the school committee meetings. So by five twenty, um, the superintendent's evaluation should be completed, the school committee self eval should be completed.
I passed mine down already.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
And, um, so can you forward those to me?
Just the.
Yeah, okay, and, um, yeah, and then, so also we have Baker Adams too, so, then next, next week is, it's coming up. Um, safety did meet, we met on Thursday, basically, we talked a lot about the, um, the election day and the fact that school was in session and, um, just the concern of some parents. So this was prior to election day, it was Thursday and then election day was Monday, so, um, there was a Plan A and then they ended up going to a Plan B, which I think addressed more of the parent concerns that Margaret had heard from and, and I get it, I mean, it's, it was definitely a lot less people entering the building than, you know, like the national, you know, but, um, but from the sounds of it, it went, her plan went well.
Yeah, I don't think, I think if you asked Margaret's opinion, she would say, please don't do it again.
Yeah, well, the pickups seem to be tough, right?
Pickup was tough, Michael, I, and Cheryl was probably there too, but Michael had said that it was, it was difficult at, at the dismissal time, there was just a lot of, a lot of.
Well, because like, I think like, he was right at, just at, um, drop-off, it's, it's not everybody all at once, but dismissal, it's everybody at once. So, yeah, maybe we should rethink that and, um, and.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was there.
Yeah.
All day, so I saw from beginning to the end. One little piece that was tricky was there were two field trips.
Yeah.
So, like in the first grade, there were five chaperones per class. So right there, there's twenty-five cars parked for a chunk of the day. Um, and then third grade also had a field trip with chaperones. So that added to some of the traffic.
I think we've got to look at that master schedule again.
Yeah, 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 so, um, I spoke to a couple of the different police officers and they seemed to feel that things went well and, you know, in term, there was no safety concerns. They, you know, kids were going where they should be, adults were going where they should be.
But there were extra policemen. Yeah, I was gonna say, but I, I have to say that, you know, the, the police department's very generous and, and, uh, in, uh, providing the other SRO for a portion of the time, but also, um, he, the chief went to uh, the town clerk's office and, uh, asked for an additional detail and they supported that.
Yes, no, there was.
That definitely helps, we have enough supervision.
Right, and that was the, so the, um, town.
The town paid for that.
Paid for that, yeah, well, that, that, that's good.
Yeah.
But we'll have to figure out in the, in the future, how you want to handle it.
Yeah, we'll have to think about that when we build a calendar.
Yeah, but the other thing we talked about with the Alice drills and, um, both of the SROs were very happy with how things went, which was, which was great. They both had, um, you know, some good input as to what could, you know, make it better, you know, what, what kids, kids and staff did, um, did great, you know, so it's just interesting how Alice is the, the big thing now in Georgetown. Um, it was on the, the radar in Georgetown years ago, we were on CNN or Fox News for it. And it's just now like, you know, kids, kids are saying to the SROs that they feel more prepared with these drills, so we know that these drills are, um, effective and, and I think kids realize that it's just, this is their way of life now, too. And the thing with the election day happening too was, was the superintendent brought it up that day, was that there was another school shooting that occurred in Colorado, so that obviously puts people on high alert too and concerned about, you know,
Sure.
People coming in through the, you know, through the doors and stuff, so.
So we were just this morning, Pam and I, were, and, were, and the SROs were at, uh, a beautiful breakfast that was organized by the Essex County Assets Builders Network, sharing all of the successes from this year. So we were asked to speak on a couple of things. But, um, one of the things that was, was really nice is that we were sitting at the same table as, um, a few school committee members from Manchester Essex. Um, they're, they're looking into, um, they, they came because they're looking into whether or not they want to join the network. But, um, we were talking, they were talking about, oh, because I introduced them to the SRO, so they were talking about, oh, you know, we've been debating, you know, and they were talking about all of the, the discussions that were going on in their town and, you know, with the arguments, probably kind of say, yeah, we, we.
Do they have SROs?
They have no SROs. So it was nice because, you know, we led them in a little bit of a discussion about, you know, our process and how we do it and. and how we do it. And Evri and Laura were able to answer some questions. So I said to them, look, if you wanna study this, we will be happy to put together a little team. You can come out. You know, you can talk to all the people that have been involved, cause we, we went through the same thing when we were talking about it. So I think they're gonna take us up on it. They were very excited about it. One of them texted the superintendent right away and said, you know, Georgetown, you know, is willing to, you know, sort of talk with us. You know, we'd like to set up a time to go and talk with them. So, you know, I think we have a lot to be proud of. And I think we have a lot to offer. You know, sometimes when you go to places and you don't, you think everybody's doing it, and you're sort of surprised when you hear that they're not. Right? But, you know, everybody's doing the best they can. But I think ours is a, a model that I think a lot of places would like to emulate.
I agree.
Cause we, one of the districts said that they have one SRO for, I wanna say nine schools. Cause we, we were talking, they were asking us questions and we were talking about it.
Single one in our district. I mean, at least not at the middle school level.
Yeah.
Wow.
At all.
So, you know, it, but it's always nice to hear the SROs talk about what they're doing and how they see it as being positive. I think it's really kind of inspiring when, when people have a chance to listen to them talk about what they believe the difference is.
I think it makes a big difference. I really do.
Oh, yeah.
Just in, just in the feelings that the kids have. And also having that, the communication between the two.
Yeah, so we, we probably, we might be hosting a group from Manchester Essex.
Wow.
You know, sharing some of the things we've been working on.
Well, to piggyback on, on that, that we should be proud, at the safety meeting, the SRO Laura had said that, so she's part of like the NEMLEC. She goes and visits them. And she said that she feels that we're way beyond, we're doing a lot more than other districts. So to hear her say that too makes me feel good. And it should make the community feel good. That, you know, we are on top of, of things. I mean, you just wanna be as prepared as possible. And I, you know, I do think we are prepared as possible, you know, if God forbid, we're ever in a situation like that. But it, it just made me feel good when she had said that districts are like, wow, you do, you do that. And, you know, and it seems that the two SROs work so well together too, which is great. Because, you know, the fifth and sixth grade, sixth graders will be at the middle school. And, you know, so it's nice to just be able to.
Transition easily from one to the other.
To have a colleague that works, you know, so closely with that age and then seeing the transition there. But I'm, I'm thrilled that the community has two.
Yes.
It's great.
They add great value. They really do.
They do. Did you wanna mention anything? CPAC, is anything going on with them?
Yeah, sure. On, so the Shining Star Awards are gonna be held on the twenty-second, Wednesday.
Jeff and Maria's?
Yes, six thirty PM to seven forty-five at Jeff and Maria's Ice Cream, nine eighteen Salem Street in Groveland. And then there is, speaking of Alice training, Safety Officer Henry Elshewski is going to be speaking with the CPAC parents. Yeah, about Alice training on, on June eleventh, six forty-five to seven forty-five PM at the Georgetown Peabody Library.
Okay.
You know, and he's done that before.
Yes, he does, yes. Which is a good idea, I think, you know, to make it an annual event. Because parents have a lot of concerns, especially, you know, I think a lot littler ones and any kind of special needs. And, you know, it does, it can create anxiety for, for sure. You know, we're trying to prepare students to handle pretty scary reality.
And he did, Officer Elshewski did say at the safety meeting that, cause it came up like, how are the, like the, some, you know, special needs children that, you know, say they're immobile or they, you know, how are they doing when the Alice show goes on? And he did say that he takes them aside and actually talks with the staff and with the, the children too. So that was nice to hear.
Yeah.
Yeah, they anticipate as much as they can in advance so that they minimize the stress.
But I, you know, and parents wanna know how they can help their children and prepare.
Sure.
How they can talk to their children about these drills.
Yeah, it's, it's not easy with any child to have to discuss those things. Okay, we have some donations. We have quite a few. I actually sent Erin, the president of the PTA, and I included you on that, because I was shocked. I was amazed. It just seems like every time we have a meeting, there's more and more donations. And I love the fact that it's just donations that, you know, everyone is getting a chance to receive that, you know, the discount for the field trips and things like that. I just like that it reaches as many students as possible, because that's the PTA mission, is really to help most.
And I would say Jenna Connors and Tiffany Cahill have worked very closely with the middle high school. And middle high school has been asking for things, which they haven't really done in the past. So we've had a lot of different requests.
Yeah.
And it's been nice that we've been able to fund a lot of them.
Right. Because the PTA, they funded the last, the, the last two speakers, right? Or one of them?
They did.
Yeah. Yeah. So, and that's huge. Those, those.
The play.
Went over very well. And you're right, in the past, the middle high school hasn't been, you know, all that. I mean, they need things too. So I'm glad to see that they're, they're asking and that the PTA is, is.
I think there's sort of, there has been a perception that it's a Penbrook PTA, but it really isn't. It's a.
That was a perception way back too, when I was on, you know, it, it, I don't think that perception will ever go away. Because, you know, in reality, it is, you know, it is more of those, those parents.
That are very.
But what people say is, okay, but when I, my kids were that young, I was, you know, running a lot of those fundraisers or volunteering when I could. And as the kids go up, it, you know.
They don't want you near them.
Yeah, and, and middle high school is just so busy too, between everything that they have. So, but, but it's nice that they, they're trying to get rid of that stigma of it being just the Penbrook PTA. But it, it was amazing how many things in this week alone that they are assisting with. So the first one, Penbrook Music Program, the Georgetown Music Parents made a donation in the amount of five hundred dollars that will help fund a day-long dance workshop, which I thought was really neat. And that'll be for grades K to six. So it's traditional New England style folk dancing. So I'll make a motion to accept the generous donation in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Georgetown Music Parents in support of the Penbrook Music Program. So moved. Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The Music Parents is another group that kind of, they fall under the radar sometimes. But they are an amazing group of, of parents that really step up when they are needed. So we have a donation from the PTA for five hundred and thirty-two dollars, thirty cents for a Walden Woods field trip, which sounds amazing, cause I love Walden Woods. And fifty-four students and five chaperones will be attending a field trip. And that would probably go to what is probably the funding for the buses, I would assume. So Carrie Lee and Christopher Franco will be taking the kids out there. So I'll make a motion to accept the generous donation of five hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty cents from the PTA for the Walden Woods field trip. So moved. Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Then we have the Museum of Science Field Trip. That would be for grade four, which is always a great field trip. The PTA has made a generous donation. So I'll make a motion to accept that generous donation in the amount of eight twenty-four fifty-six to support the Penbrook fourth grade trip to the Museum of Science. So moved. Second. Uh, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we also want to just recognize that the last day of school will officially be on June twentieth. It is a half day. And we just wanna make that formal. It's funny how many texts I'm getting, what's the last day of school? What's the last day of school? I'm like, hold on, no, he's asking you guys. So I'll make a motion to designate the last day of school on Thursday, June twentieth, twenty nineteen. And that will be a half day as presented. So moved. Second. Uh, discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that sounds good. That's definitely earlier than, you know.
Yes, that is.
So that is good. June twentieth, plenty of, of, of summer for these, for these kids. You know, and it's just around the corner too, which is nice. So I wish the band a good concert tomorrow. I'm sure that they'll do a great job. What else is coming up before we meet next Thursday? We just, the committee has a lot to do. So I know it's, it's kinda crunch time.
Yeah, and then, of course, the, you'll start to see all the end of the year celebrations. You know, those are all gonna start coming up really quick. Memorial Day ceremonies are.
Oh, that's next Friday at the, at Penbrook.
Twenty-fourth at Penbrook. And I know I saw one, and then the middle school is the twenty-third. At ten forty-five. So I know that those things are, there's a youth council. We're, we're having another community. The children have decided that the title for the youth center will be Georgetown Youth Community Center.
Yeah, nice.
Yes, so G Y C C. So the first meeting of the youth council, and I just wanna make sure people know, it's not a youth council like a student council where you have to be elected. If you are interested in being part of the planning and leadership for the, the center, you just need to come. Just need to come and express your opinions.
And when's that?
Uh, that is Monday, the twentieth.
Okay. And you meet at, at Pearlie?
That will be at Pearlie. Let's see. And there was a Roman culture celebration at eleven o'clock on the twenty-second. I'm not sure exactly what that is. Pam has Georgetown cares.
May twenty-third?
Twenty-third. There's a teacher appreciation luncheon.
Yeah, retirement.
Fourth. And there's a retirement party.
Twenty-third, yeah.
On the twenty-third, senior showcase, which is always fun. The seniors do like a little talent show. That's on the twenty-fourth. So that's fun. Of course, Memorial Day. Then you're starting in with senior final exams, then prom that week. So it's gonna get busy really quick here. There's a spring art show on the twenty-ninth at six o'clock at the school.
I love those art shows.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then next year, we, we, then I couldn't make it happen this year. But next year, I really wanna do a teacher signing day. So what I would like to do is all of the seniors that are interested in pursuing education, I'd like to have a ceremony. You know, kinda like what we've done for kids when they've gone to D-one schools, you know, they have like a signing party. So invite their parents and just make a big deal out of the fact that they're, I wanna do it during Teacher Appreciation Week.
Oh, that's nice.
So that, we just couldn't manage it this year. Sometimes you just can't, right? But it's something that we'd like to do. The other thing we can't manage this year because of where the prom falls is we've been talking about doing it for a couple of years and Dan's on board with it if we wanna do it. Is, you know, where the seniors go over to Penbrook and travel through the, the, the issue this year is that the prom
With their regalia.
Is, is, so they get, they're gonna have their, their rehearsal. They get their cap and gowns. We're just anticipating the kids are gonna be ready to go leave right away to get ready for the prom.
Yeah.
So I don't think it's gonna work this year, but our hope is we can make it work next year.
Yeah, I think that's nice.
I think it's fun. I think I really wanted to do that. It's just timing.
Yes.
Different school for them.
It's a different, it is a different school. So that's another thing, you know, that they don't, they don't share that. But, you know, we think it would be really nice for the younger kids in particular to look up to, you know.
And many of the same teachers are there.
And that's right, it's their teachers. So, yeah, so we really like to do that. But we just, we just couldn't manage it this year. The year just came to a.
Yeah, it does. It goes very quick after. Once the spring hits, it goes really quick. So, so we'll meet next, next Thursday. And we'll be prepared for those, to discuss the evaluations and things. So if you guys have any questions over the, during the next week regarding anything Baker Adams or the evaluations, just, you know, let me know. So I'll make a motion to, oh, I, before I make a motion, I do just also wanna say that we are going to, in years past, we've done the reorg like this evening. So, and then it, then people wonder, okay, so when do we start on the subcommittee? Was I on the subcommittee then? Or does it start that day? Whatever. So what we're going to do is the first meeting in the fall. So the school tour date.
August date.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that.
That makes sense. Yes, it does.
And then sort of, so there's, the subcommittees will begin, you know, that school year.
Right.
And hopefully we can wrap up whatever, like say governance is doing. So a new person isn't all of a sudden looking at something that, you know, the previous people have been working on. So. So, okay, at that, with that being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-three. There is no reason for an executive session this evening. So we'll see everybody next week. So moved. Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Good night.
Good night.